All right, then, thank you all for coming. If I can call this meeting to order. If you will rise so we can have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First up is Wednesday's pet. And if Ms. Stenick can take the floor and fill us in.
Okay, this week we have a kitten. He's between two and three months old. His name is Jerry, little G, I'm told. And he's a little squirmy, but very cute. And I know that when I got one about this size, I put a leash on it and he really thought he was a dog by the time I finished, so, you know, you could find out too. But he's very cute and he's ready to go. 211 One Round Highway, you can come and pick him up. Okay?
Thank you, Sherri. And Sherri, are you still undefeated?
So far.
That means every pet Sherri's presented has been adopted.
That's fantastic.
Next up, approval of minutes to consider and act upon the minutes of special meeting, July 11th. Can we take these together or is there a reason to spread them out?
Nope.
Split them up?
None on my end.
And regular meeting, August 1st, 2012. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
No.
Is he good to go?
Yes.
All right, ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And then a number of information items. First up, resignations from the Parking Authority. Trudy Durrell from 64 Woodcrest Road. And again, Trudy, thank you very much for your service. Parking Authority is a very important part of our town function, very much appreciated by our commuters. First election appointments, also for information only, to the Clean Energy Task Force. Scott Thompson, 2500 Road is Scott here? Then on to the Conservation Commission. Samuel Boyarsky of 200 Autumn Ridge for the 11-9 to 11-14 term. Richard Santalessa from 218 Hoyden's Hill Road, from term 11-8 to 11-13. Fill out that term. And then Felicia Watson from 546 Hoyden's Hill Road for a term from 11-9 to 11-14. I should point out that Mr. Boyarsky and Ms. Watson are alternates. Mr. Santalessa is a full-time member. Then moving on to the Parking Authority, to Matt Ferhaska from 81 Fox Run Road, term 11-8 to 11-13, filling out Ms. Durrell's spot, who just resigned. All right, then moving on to appointments, and we'll take these one at a time. First up is to the Board of Finance. Catherine C. Albin, 2457 Burr Street, a Democrat, to replace Elaine Gaffney, who resigned. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? I will definitely comment. Ms. Albin's been involved in the town for an extended period of time, served on the Board of Education, has been very involved in different projects around town, including the Borough Gardens Committee, which she's chaired. I think she's got some great background for the Board of Finance. I think it gives us some good balance and her perspective will be one that will be valued and will help the town as we move forward. Go ahead.
And I too think that Mrs. Albin will be a wonderful addition. She will hit the ground running. She certainly knows how things operate here in town and has a lot of experience that will be helpful as we move forward. So I'm grateful she's willing to serve.
Just quickly, and I would echo those sentiments. I've worked with Mrs. Albin over many years on the Board of Education, and I've always found her to be informed and helpful and very engaged in her boards, and I know she'll be a great addition to the Board of Finance.
Any direct questions from Ms. Albin?
No, sir.
All right. Let's see, any comments from the public? All right, back to the board, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. Would you care to say a few words?
Do you need me up there?
Yes, you have to say them from the mic, from the stand.
I would just say thank you to the members of the Board of Selectmen for your vote of confidence, and I look forward to working for the town again in this new capacity. It will be an exciting opportunity as well as, I know, a challenging one.
All right, thank you, and thank you for volunteering. Again, the strength of this town is the volunteers and the number of people that serve on committees. Ms. Albin, Jen will be in touch with you just to coordinate getting sworn in and that type of thing, so that you're there for the next Board of Finance meeting. All right, next up, Solid Waste and Recycling Commission. Wendy Martinez from 684 Catamount Road, Catamount Street rather, to term 11-08 to I'm thinking this has got to be a typo on this, because to 11-12? Is that a shorter term? All right, looks like we're filling that one out. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second? All right, any discussion?
I will just say, I just briefly met Wendy in the hallway and talked to her on the phone, and hoping certainly that she will be eligible for reappointment, since it is such a short term, but she does have an interest in this area and has had conversation with people on the commission, and I think she'd be a good addition to the commission, and I'm glad she's willing to serve.
All right, I'll echo that. I've known Wendy for a number of years. We've worked together in real estate. She's been an active supporter of the environment and very active in town, and again, I think is another great example of our volunteer spirit here in Fairfield, and I thank Wendy for being willing to serve yet again. Any further comments? All right, any discussion for the public? All right, and back to the board, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wendy, thank you. And did you have any comments to?
I'm just looking forward to serving and maybe helping some of the cycling area.
All right, thank you, thank you. All right, next up, the Town Facilities Commission. We have a number of appointments here. Do we want to take these one at a time, or is it group? Any preference?
You can do them all at once.
So probably one at a time.
All right, we'll do that one at a time. First up is Nicholas Caruso from 32 Nutmeg Lane, to serve a term from 7:12 to 7:15. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Is Mr. Caruso here? All right, good. All right, any comments from the board? All right, go ahead.
Just that I had a chance to talk with Mr. Caruso back in the spring, and I think he will bring a lot in terms of his experience, so thank you.
I too had a chance to talk to Mr. Caruso recently. I'm very impressed with his background. He's got a strong resume. I also think it's great that we're getting new faces involved, and I want to thank you for being willing to step up and volunteer and help us out on this very important commission. Any comments from the public? Back to the board, are we ready to vote on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Caruso. And I will point out that you'll be, Jen will be in touch with my office to be sworn in. Wendy, I forgot to mention that for you too, so you can get sworn in officially to be on that commission. We will be in touch with you on that. Next up, Mr. Edwin Hill, 80 Potter's Lane, for a term of 7:10 to 7:13. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, any discussion from the board? First off, Mr. Hill here? Off there, good.
I will, again, back in the spring, had made contact, and I am glad you have some wonderful experience, and particularly, I believe, it's the solar experience, which is just very interesting, and with Solarized Connecticut now, it's just a great tie-in, so thanks for coming on board.
Very welcome.
Hopefully.
Yes, and again, thank you for volunteering. I think that I was impressed with your resume, I enjoyed our conversation, and I appreciate, again, I'm thrilled with as much new blood as we have stepping up to help participate and kind of keep the volunteer spirit in town moving forward.
We're for it, Ellen.
All right. Okay to go to the public?
Mm-hmm.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board, are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr.?
Thank you.
Again, Jen will be in touch about the next steps. Next up is Terry Leopold, 146 Coleman Road, for a term 7:11 through 7:14. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Is Ms. Leopold here?
She's not able to attend due to a work commitment.
Okay.
I believe that was, I know, here.
All right, all right, any comments from the board?
Though Ms. Leopold isn't here, I also spoke with her at length, and I think it would be great to have her experience and perspective as well. She has a strong resume for this board, and I would be comfortable supporting her today because of the chance that I had to speak with her.
I guess I'll echo that. I had a very good conversation with Ms. Leopold. I think she brings a good resume of experience and a good perspective of the TFC, and I look forward to her serving the town in that capacity. Any comments from the public? All right, back to the board, are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next up, Howard Rosenbaum, 151 Wilt Road, from a term of 7:11 through 7:14. Mr. Rosenbaum, I believe he had a work commitment and couldn't make it today too. Any comments from the board?
Same as with Ms. Leopold, and so I am happy to support Mr. Rosenbaum at this time. Again, I think it's, there's a great diversity of perspectives and experience coming on board with this group of people, and I'm really thrilled, so I'm happy to support him at this time.
Yep, I've had a chance to work with Mr. Rosenbaum. He's an architect in town here. I've found him extremely professional, knowledgeable. I think he's going to bring a great perspective on the TFC from that standpoint, so I'm, and to echo Kristen's comments, I think getting that kind of balance on the TFC gives us some great resources to use going forward and will really help the town. Okay, any comments from the public? All right, back to the board, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, congratulations, Mr. Rosenbaum. All right, next up, Board of Selectmen. To hear, consider, and approve the designation of the street named Daley Drive for the new access road to Fairfield Metro Train Station and proposed development that runs from King's Highway East to Black Rock Turnpike in recognition of Fairfield's Medal of Honor recipient, Michael J. Daley. I'm going to propose we take no action on this. We've had some difficulty reaching out to the family, and I think I would suggest if we take no action, it drops off the agenda. We'll continue to make efforts to get in touch with the family, but I think it would be best to hear from them that they're okay with this before we go forward naming the street in this regard. So if that's acceptable to the board, we'll just move on to the next item? All right, I'm looking for, okay, good, thank you, Don. Next up, item nine, from the Human Resources Director, to hear an update on the Fairfield Public Nurses Unit 34 of the AFT, FCT, and FLCIO settlement agreement dated August 2nd, 2012. Ms. Merrillise.
On the term 34, over to Pat McHale, who will give you a similar summary, a GFC summary, what he has with that company.
Okay, and if I just might, before Mr. McHale starts, I just want to comment that this is another bargaining union agreement that I think shows that the employees are really trying to work with the town, recognize that the difficult economy they're in, and taking a very reasonable approach in terms of how we do that. I think that, that again speaks to the strength of the town, the strength of our employees, and their commitment to making sure Fairfield continues to be a great place to live. But with that, I will turn it over to Mr. McHale.
Thanks, Mr. Tetra. Thank you, Board of Selectmen, for inviting me to come and speak with you. I am pleased, as Mr. Tetra alluded to, announce that we've reached another settlement with a group of employees, in this case, it's our nursing employees. These are public health nurses in the town, nurses who work in our schools, both public and private. Bargaining unit comprises 33 nurses represented by the American Federation of Teachers. We reached the settlement with them on August 2nd, and we're seeking approval of that settlement of the legislative body, the RTM, this month. The nurses themselves, just a few days ago, have ratified the terms of the settlement, and we are hopeful, optimistic that the RTM will consider the settlement favorably as well. Let me just give you an outline, an overview of the settlement terms. They're not dissimilar from what I reported to you all approximately 45 days ago on, which was the settlement we reached with the dispatchers. The agreement is, in principle, analogous, and in most ways identical, to the changes to the contract we negotiated with the dispatchers, both for current employee benefits, for post-employment retirement benefits, and for pension benefits. And all those things represent enhancements in terms of the town's view of labor cost containment. So I want to start by thanking the nurses, thanking the American Federation of Teachers for the way they approached negotiations, for the fact that we were able to settle a contract with them cooperatively together, recognizing the financial realities that we're dealing with in Fairfield, as well as throughout the state and the nation, and they, as Mr. Tetra has already said, should be applauded for working with the town cooperatively, and we're hoping the other unions that we have remaining in negotiations will follow suit. The contract is a four-year contract. Remember, all of these agreements we've been dealing with expired back in 2010, June 30, 2010. The nurses haven't had a raise since June 2010. They have, those who are not at the top step of the salary schedule have gotten step increases. There are fewer of them in number, moving up on the salary schedule, which is a short schedule, which is why there aren't many that aren't at the maximum step, but they haven't had a raise since 2010. There are no retroactive wage increases under the terms of this settlement, okay? So effective upon ratification of the settlement by the RTM, nurses will receive a 4% increase. So they had no increase in 2010, no increase in all of 2011. So effective sometime in September, assuming at the end of September, the RTM ratifies this settlement, September 2012, they will receive a 4% general wage increase across the board. Then, July 1, 2013, they will receive a 2.25% general wage increase. So over the course of a four-year term, their total augmentation to base pay will be 4 plus 2.25, or 6.25%, which is the same number that was bargained with the dispatcher's bargaining unit about two months ago. With regard to medical insurance, all of the same changes that were made to the plan design with the dispatcher's bargaining unit were agreed upon with the nurses. All of the co-pay changes, all of the increase in prescription co-pay costs as they're incurred, as are set forth in the materials that have been provided to you, and are identical to the plan design changes we've been trying to implement town-wide, were agreed upon by the nurses bargaining unit. In addition, the nurses bargaining unit agreed that they would change the way they contribute to the cost of benefits. Like the other units in the past, the nurses have paid a flat dollar contribution. Their contribution has been $31 per week regardless of whether they elected single, two-person, or family coverage. What they agreed to in this settlement would be effective upon settlement, they will increase their contribution from $31 a week to 12% of whatever the premium costs are for the level of benefits they elect. So 12% of single coverage if they elect coverage only for themselves, two-person if they elect coverage for themselves and a spouse, or 12% of family coverage, and you all know from prior conversations like this that in our town of Fairfield, family coverage costs about $30,000 a year. So that's a significant increase that they've agreed to in terms of contributions to medical premiums for those who have two-person coverage or family coverage. It's about a wash for those who have single coverage, since they were paying the same amount regardless in the past. With regard to hiring and assignments, with regard to this bargaining unit and meeting with the department heads, it has become more crucial that we have flexibility to assign and hire nurses based on their qualifications, skills, and abilities as opposed to a strict seniority analysis, and we've negotiated language into the contract that allows us to hire and retain and assign nurses based on their individual skills and abilities, and only when all of those things are equal, education, skills, and abilities, does seniority play a role. And that's really important when you're dealing with one-on-one nurses, working with a special needs student in the school system that has developed a relationship with that student, and that student matriculates or something changes and you need to have a layoff. To have to go by strict seniority in that environment isn't business-friendly or appropriate in terms of public allocation of resources, and the nurses through negotiations have agreed to migrate from more of a seniority-based system to an education, skills, and abilities analysis, which is terrific. Similar reductions in paid time off. One of the issues we've confronted in Fairfield is excessive amounts relative term, lots of paid time off, especially with regard to sick leave. The nurses agreed to reduce sick leave at every level, most dramatically for those with 10 years of service or more. In the past, they'd earned 30 paid sick leave days. They reduced that by a third to 20 days. Those between five and 10 years of service in the past were allocated 20 sick leave days. That number was reduced to 15. Between one and five years, had in the past earned 12 sick leave days, that number's reduced to 10. Those in the early stages, instead of earning days with under a year of service at the rate of 1/4 a day per month worked, it's reduced to one day per month worked to a maximum of six days in the first year of employment. So sick leave was dramatically curtailed, as it has been in the other settlements that we've reported out to you. Next, with regard to workers' compensation, you're familiar with the fact that the contracts we've brought to you had a workers' compensation supplemental provision, so that if someone was injured in the course of performing their duties, in addition to receiving the benefits provided under the law, the workers' compensation law, the town supplemented those benefits for a period of time, up to 60 days for people with more than five years of service, up to 30 days for those with one to five years of service, and the town would pay the difference between what the statutory benefit was and what employees' regular base pay was for that period. We agreed through this settlement that that would stop. Town's not going to simply provide extra compensation above the statutory allotment for absences due to work-related injuries. However, if employees wish to have supplemental compensation, we will continue to allow that, provided that we debit their sick leave account by the amount of days at issue, but we don't change the maximum number of days for which they could receive supplemental compensation. It's no longer a free extra compensation benefit. It results in a reduction in a sick leave benefit, assuming those sick leave benefits have been accrued and are available to the individual. With regard to retirement, something that was probably the biggest priority when I first met everyone in Fairfield in terms of making a change to collective bargaining agreements going forward. Here too, we reached an agreement that people newly hired would not be added to our defined benefit pension plan. New hires will participate in a defined contribution plan, the 401A plan, the same plan that we bargained with the dispatcher's unit. We will not be adding this group of employees to the defined benefit pension plan. We will match their contribution to the pension plan, up to 5% of their base pay, and that's what they will receive. According to the pension calculations that have been done following the settlement, that should result in a roughly 4% of payroll savings in terms of funding of the town pension as opposed to continuing the defined benefit pension plan. With regard to post-employment medical, post-employment medical benefits, we made all of the same changes with some small differences that I'll explain with the nurses as we did with the dispatchers. First of all, instead of being guaranteed for those eligible for post-employment medical benefits under the same medical plan you had when you retired, the nurses agreed that the benefits they would receive following retirement would evolve as the benefits for active employees evolve, which we expect will continue to involve more and more cost containment as pressure is put on all of us to continue to find ways to contain costs. So that's an important change. For those, in addition, employees will contribute now in retirement as opposed to in the past towards the cost of post-retirement medical benefits. Those who were hired prior to June 30, 2010, will contribute to those benefits at the same rate that they were contributing at the time they retire. So if they retire next year forever in their retirement, they'll pay 12% of the premium costs. For those who are hired after July 30, 2010, they will pay whatever the percentage rate active employees pay as that percentage rate evolves over time. Okay? Dependence, one of the priorities in what we've achieved in other negotiations is limiting the definition of dependent for post-employment medical benefit eligibility to those who were dependents at the time the retiree discontinued employment with the town. That too was achieved in this settlement, so only those who were dependents at the time of retirement are eligible to participate in the town's plan. And that comprises a summary of the economic changes. There are a variety of other technical language changes designed to clarify parts of the contract in terms of clarifying what part-time benefits, what part-time employees receive in terms of benefits, and so there are a number of changes to the contract where that was done, but it was simply meant to codify the current practice in a way that made the contract clearer. It does not reflect a substantive change. Does anyone have any questions about that?
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. And thank you for the summary. I certainly appreciate that.
My pleasure.
The first question I have is back to the comment made about the change and how folks are promoted within the organization, going from, you know, strictly a service-based model to a model that incorporates education, skills, and abilities. So my question is, how are these skills and abilities components going to be measured? Is that going to be a function of human resources? What are the criteria that will be used to evaluate your skills versus somebody else's skills as it rolls into this type of process?
Well, it's an excellent question. There are several ways the town will demonstrate a differentiation in skills and abilities. One is with a performance evaluation tool, where people are given feedback regarding their skills and abilities through performance reviews. More importantly though, for these nurses who are assigned, in some cases, not in all cases, this won't apply to a number of the nurses in the bargaining unit, but increasingly where nurses are assigned to the public school setting, and even in some cases, they are assigned one-on-one to a child with a disability that requires certain nursing assistance, the fact that the nurse has the ability to deal with the child's specific disabilities, whatever those disabilities may be, and they range from very narrow disabilities to very broad disabilities where there's a lot of medically fragile students in the school system that require very specific skills. Having those skills and abilities now will matter, such that if we're in the unfortunate circumstance, and we certainly hope we won't be, but if we are, where we're needing to lay off nurses, whereas in the past where we would need to look at this more in terms of simply the educational background, which may be the same across all of the nurses since they're registered nurses and all have the same educational background, we can now look at skills and abilities before we have to go to a strict seniority-based layoff. And that's really what this is designed to avoid, is in the event that the economy continues to sour, in the event that this is a department that you all decide that we need to make reductions, we don't want to be hamstrung by strict seniority in terms of making these decisions, because there are nurses with specific skills dealing with specific students, and those skills will be demonstrated from the fact that they've worked in the past dealing with the medically fragile students in the school setting.
So you've done a good job of explaining the different types of jobs there are, because this is a unique circumstance, right? There will be nurses that work in the school, there will be nurses that work one-to-one, and I understand that. Can we be more specific about the evaluation process? Is it your typical human resources? Well, maybe I should first ask, what is our current evaluation process that human resources Well, maybe I should first ask, what is our current evaluation process that human resources does use? How often is it done, and how does that weave into this process?
I don't know. I'm sure Mary knows.
I don't do the process since I don't have direct observation of any of these people. We have Joanne Ryan, who is the person in charge of the nurses. She's in the Management Union. She does reviews on an annual or biannual basis, depending on if she has any issues. Her questions and concerns are certainly those things that Attorney McHale has addressed, but also there are a couple of office worker nurses who do have, I mean, I believe all our nurses have good skills and abilities, but when you transition from a nurse in a school system to a office, someone who's doing office nursing, it's very different, and you're looking for different skills and abilities. So those things are addressed in the annual, or sometimes it takes Joanne 18 months to get through everybody, but she feels that it's better to do them and take her time and having meaningful instead of just, you know, cookie cutter evaluations.
Right, so it's a performance review, is what I'm hearing?
Yes, yes, and it's not done by HR. It is done by somebody who directly, who is a nurse and directly supervises them.
Should HR have more of an involvement in the human resources evaluation process?
I have involvement with them to a certain extent, but it would be very difficult. We have almost 500 people, full-time employees.
I understand.
For me to be actively involved in evaluations, actively involved with union negotiations, there's a limit. So I really help and address those things where there are issues. When people are just, you know, if someone's being disciplined and we go through the discipline process and there's a grievance, then I'm actively involved. But I'm not actively involved in the day-to-day operations.
So it sounds like more, you're more of a facilitator than, like, an administrator of the actual evaluation process. Okay, and that makes sense based on the volume you just described to me. Okay, thank you for that. Just one more, please. I think if I heard it correctly, on the dependents for the post-retirement, could you just walk me through that? Did I understand that to mean that if I'm retired and, let's say, I'm single and I'm paying X for my medical, if I were to add a spouse or add a dependent, they would not be eligible? Is that what that says?
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Is that what that means?
Correct.
So there aren't any circumstances where a retired, post-employment-eligible person could add a spouse or a family because of a change in life?
That's right.
Okay.
To be independent, to be covered under our policy, you must have been a dependent at the time of retirement.
Okay, thank you.
I'm good. Thanks. Thank you, Kevin. Any comments?
Questions? No comments. Comments? I, you know, thank you for presenting before us, and it sounds like the similarities to the dispatchers are many. And I think that the ability for the flexibility with the work arrangements, I'm sure, will be welcome in some management perspective. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
All right. Attorney McHale, I want to thank you. I also want to point out that this is, Attorney McHale's been before us a few times now, and this is part of our ongoing effort to get a bit more visibility on the contracts, what's taking place. In fact, frankly, to give the RTM a heads-up before this hits their agenda, as much as this board doesn't vote on the contracts, the RTM does, this gives them an opportunity to have a heads-up in a few more days to consider it. And if they watch this on TV, they get a chance to hear the presentation before it actually comes to them, so they're better prepared through each of that. So thank you very much again, and thank you for your efforts.
My pleasure. Appreciate it.
Next up, item 10. To here consider and act upon the following resolution. Resolve that the Board of Selectmen hereby approve the sale of the town of Fairfield of the parcel of land, which includes the driveway which presently serves 3171 Bronson Road, Fairfield, Connecticut. Which sale shall be to the owner, Eleanor S. Garcia-Garcia, or her respective successors, heirs, and assigns for the sum of $18,000. The buyer shall provide a Class A2 survey delineating the boundaries of the property. This approval shall be contingent upon the approval of Fairfield Conservation Commission should same be required by statute or ordinance. The first selectman is hereby authorized to execute a deed and all other documents necessary to effectuate the sale. May I have a motion to accept?
Some of it.
A second? A second, thank you. Let's see, we have both Attorney Ambrose and Attorney Lester here to discuss this. Any questions from the board?
Just a quick one, thank you, sir. When we had this before us last time, I had some questions about the devaluation process and how it was arrived at and how it could be validated. So could we just quickly touch on that without belaboring the item?
And I have obtained surveys of the property in question, which were as late as 2000, which show the park and area as the area in question. This area has been used by the present owner and prior owners for the last, oh, at least 60 to 70 years as a driveway to serve this subject property. I brought it to the attention of the Board of Selectmen that when we did a title examination of the property, we discovered this discrepancy. And as I mentioned at that time, one cannot get adverse possession against the town, and therefore, I contacted the town attorney and indicated that this has been a, this is a title issue. The property in question is undergoing a short sale. The present owner is not able to pay the mortgage. The mortgage, the outstanding mortgage balance is exceedingly effective as the value of the property. And the house is somewhat falling into some deterioration process. It was for that reason that we contacted the town to offer the amount to acquire the parcel. The parcel in question, again, has been used, and I have a copy, I was asked last time, about a contour map that I had provided. And this is a contour map which goes back to 1968, which shows the parcel in question. And in fact, that was obtained from the Engineering Department. But at that time, the driveway was used by the homeowner, and there's no other access to the property other than that particular driveway.
Okay, so, the driveway, where are we on this map?
Let me show you a better copy. This is the house here, and it does depict the driveway which has been in use since, well, I was able to get another survey from the town, one that goes back to 2004, which shows the property being used by that, the driveway being used by that parcel. And I was able to get a further copy of a survey, this last one coming from the Engineering This depicts the area in question. In 1931, we were able to get, or I was able to get a survey of the property going back to 1931. This also from the Engineering Department, which shows the parcel in question and shows that the only driveway serving that property in 1931 was the driveway where it presently exists. So for 65 years or plus, this is the only access to this property.
Okay, and that's good information. Thank you very much. But if I could go back to my question, please. My question, and that's great information, thank you, and I get it, and it makes a lot of sense. And at some point, we need to trust that the people who put this deal together have done it in a, in an accurate manner. I thought last time around that there was a difference in opinion on what size the piece of property was for 2,000, wasn't it 3,000 and change before we finished the conversation?
You had asked last time the size of the property, and I think we tried to estimate that amount prior to obtaining the actual survey, which I only received three days ago. And I think we expressed the fact that we thought it was around 2,000 square feet.
Okay, because I seem to recall it being in the neighborhood of an eighth of an acre, like 3,500 square feet.
No, the actual square footage turns out to be approximately 2,800 square feet, as per this, as again, I've just received this survey. And it shows, it depicts this parcel to have approximately 2,800 square feet.
All right, so it's 2,800?
2,800, 2,700.
Not 2,000.
That's correct.
Okay, so there is a discrepancy in the size. So now, now that I understand that, I'm good with that. And my other comment is, you know, I did ask for some type of, you know, without going crazy, some type of analysis on what it might be worth in the open market, should you be able to evaluate that. And, you know, there is an email here that I, that I was just handed that's really just an email exchange between Attorney Lesser and the, and Mr. Ross. I mean, it's frankly not an evaluation of any, of any means, to be honest with you.
I think the day after I was here, I happened to be with Don Ross.
Right.
Up in New Britain doing some tax appeal pre-trials for the town. And I, we discussed this on the ride up, and, you know, I talked about it, talked about what the piece was. It happened to be when we got up there, Mike Fazio, who is our appraiser, he is the town's hired appraiser in these tax appeals, was there, and we had a discussion with him. And Mr. Fazio said, "There's no way you can really determine on a piece like this. There's no comparables. There's no way." He says, "The real value of a piece like this, a small piece that's really of no use to anybody but this one parcel, is what the buyer will pay and what the seller will sell for. That's how you determine the true value." So I said to him, you know, "The piece is about 2,000 square feet. It's a driveway. It's not of any use to anybody else. We're selling it for $18,000." He says, "That's a great price." He says, "Thank you." So that's all I have. I don't think you're going to get an appraisal, and you could pay, you know, $1,000 to some appraiser to do it. It's not worth it. I mean, the true price for a piece like this is what the parties agree on. So if you decide to agree on it, then I think it'll be fair.
Any comments from the public? All right, seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote? All in favor? Aye. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
I would ask respectfully that the board send this matter on to TPZ, send a letter so that they can give us an opinion on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All of you.
Any of it, all of it.
Take the quarter down. Next up, item 11, from the IT Director. To here consider and act upon the following motion. Resolve that the agreement between Fair TV, the town-specific Public Access Television Committee of Fairfield, and the Southern New England Telephone Company, DBA AT&amp;T, Connecticut, regarding AT&amp;T carrying Fair TV's programming, gets hereby approved, and the first selectman is authorized to sign all documents necessary to effectuate said agreement. May I have a motion to accept? A second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Leslie, can you step us through this?
Yes, there are two things here. One is the agreement with AT&amp;T to publish, I guess is the best way to, no, 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 wait a second. To publish our stuff. And then the other part of it is to provide us with the funding to do the connections so that they can do that. And so right now, you start off and you, you hit the camera here, you go into the box there, you come across our network down into the basement here, and we can do this from anywhere, as you've seen in the school buildings and stuff like that, anywhere on our network. And we come back to the basement here, and then we have a line that goes out to Cable Vision. And what we're, what this whole agreement is, is to make a line out to AT&amp;T so they can do the same thing that Cable Vision is doing on channel 78, 79, AT&amp;T can do it on their channels, too, and provide it to the AT&amp;T customers in the town of Fairfield area. So that's the explanation. Any questions?
All right, any questions from the board? All right, seeing none. Any questions from the public? Or comments from the public, I guess I should say that. All right, then back to the board. Any further discussion, or are we ready to vote?
I vote. It's sad that I'm glad to see this happening because I know that there are folks in town who will now have a different kind of access, and it's always good when you can provide more access.
I agree completely, especially for the town commuters that are doing seven-to-seven, and they, the last thing they want to do is come to a meeting, but they can stay up to date.
All right. Ready to vote?
I am.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Leslie. Next up, item 12, Old Post Road Area Association. To here consider and act upon a request from the Old Post Road Area Association to use the town seal on signs being installed to mark the town's Old Post Road Historic District. May I have a motion to accept?
Some of it.
A second?
Second.
Is there someone here from the Old Post Road Association? If you'd come up to the podium and state your name for the record?
My name is Zoe Beevonne. I'm with the Old Post Road Area Association, and we have received acceptance by the Historic District Commission to put up signs that resemble this to designate our historic neighborhood, which obviously is the birthplace of our town. And we would love to use the town seal on these signs, which is congruous with many other historic districts, I think, throughout New England. And we have our proposal here. It shows where we're planning on putting the signs, et cetera. I'm not sure how much you really need to know, but this is a sort of mock-up of what we would be doing. The only differential is that we would be taking off the 1963 date, which was the date that we were entered into the register of historic places.
Okay. Zoe, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions from the board?
No, the signs are beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just comment, I think it's, in essence, the town seal becomes, in this case, kind of the town logo. And I think it's both great that this kind of helps tie the historic character of our town together, the historic district, and keeps Fairfield in forefront. I also think it's very appropriate that the Board of Selectmen approve any use of our town seal or logo in something like this. I realize that the town clerk has a certain amount of authority in this area. Ms. Brown, did you wish to add anything at this time?
I'm going to.
Okay. Any further discussion from the board? Any comments from the public? Are we ready to vote?
We are.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Zoe, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, item 13, from the town clerk. To here consider and act upon the following resolution. Resolve that Michael Tetra, first selectman of the town of Fairfield, is empowered to execute and deliver in the name and on behalf of the town of Fairfield a contract with the Connecticut State Library for an historic documents preservation grant. May I have a motion to accept?
Some of it.
A second?
Second.
All right. Ms. Brown?
This is our annual grant that I apply for each year. It's $6,500 this year. The grant actually comes from the recording fees that I remit to the state of Connecticut, and it comes back to us in the form of a grant. This year, I'll be using the grant to restore our indexes that we have from the 1920s. The grantor and the grantees are all in the same books, and they've become unwieldy. They're about six inches fat. And if you're searching somebody, you don't want your grantor and your grantee in the same book. It just becomes too confusing. So to make it more user-friendly, I'd like to use this grant for that purpose.
Good. Any questions from the board?
Question, just in terms, this is a preservation of our actual paper.
Yes.
Records. And what's the plan, just from a broader perspective, maybe not specifically as your name to this grant, but in terms of digitizing?
We are digitizing our records. We have to have a paper copy, it's in the state statutes. So by law, we have to have the paper copies, but we also have them burned on CDs, they're stored off-site, and they're also microfilmed. And these records, although they're paper, part of the grant, they will be microfilmed as well.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of that parallel process. Thank you.
Any further questions? No, sir. All right. Any comments from the public? All right, any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, I've had a request for a brief break. If we can, let's take a two-minute break, and we'll meet right back here.
They're very late, yeah.
Smarter minds than us.
Jersey did it. I don't know whose.
He did, he had...
I almost said, like, you know, go chance, just to kind of...
Or I always said, oh.
Chris, I come back.
He brought the man with him. He's my public citizen bodyguard.
Bodyguard as well. Yes, you can.
I don't know what he's talking about.
Yes, I know.
I'm going to stand behind him.
Mark usually does it by himself, but the two of you, yeah, we're outnumbered.
Yeah, definitely. Hi, Meg.
How are you?
Well, how are you? A little tired this morning.
The what?
A little tired this morning. Past my bedtime. It's a BlackBerry. Yeah, that's whatever the town gives me. It does the purpose. I don't do all the new-fangled stuff, I just want to get email. Email and use a phone. I don't have an app for anything. Just get email.
All right, if we can bring the meeting back to order. We are moving on with item 14 on the agenda, from the Economic and Community Development Director. To hear, consider and act upon the following resolution. Resolve that in accordance with a request from the Director of Community and Economic Development, the Fairfield Center Improvement Plan be and hereby is approved, and further resolve that the first electman be and hereby is authorized to submit an application under the Main Street Investment Fund Program as referenced in section 78 and 79 of Public Act 11-1, to execute documents necessary to facilitate the town's participation in said program and to administer any grant funds provided in connection therewith. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Barnhart, can you fill us in?
Yes. With your permission, the town intends to seek funding through the Main Street Investment Fund, which is being administered by the Office of Policy and Management, to extend the existing streetscape motif from its current terminus around Thorpe Street, further west toward the Southport Line to approximately the South Pine Creek Road intersection, depending on funding that would be available. The state has made available approximately $5 million statewide. It's a competitive grant application. Municipalities that are eligible include those that are under $30,000 in population, as well as those that are eligible under the STEEP program, the Small Town Economic Assistance Program, which the town of Fairfield is a participant. Eligible projects are defined as those projects that are part of a previously approved plan to develop or improve town commercial centers. That plan has to be approved by the governing body of the municipality. So there's a couple of things that are different about this application from other grant applications to the state. One is that the state is specifically asking that the town, as a condition of applying for the funds, obtain a certified resolution from the legislative body authorizing the submission of the grant application, and designate an individual to administer the program. That's unusual, because usually you do it on the back end. And secondly, this grant is preconditioned upon the town having a plan to improve a town commercial center that's been approved by the governing body. So without that specific approval, we would not be eligible to apply for these funds. Towns can apply for up to $500,000. We have prepared a cost estimate in conjunction with this proposed project, and the project limits as described, that is approximately $500,000 to do this work. Essentially, the work would involve new curbing, new walks, concrete aprons, brick pavers, street furniture, ornamental lighting, and street trees, similar to what you find in Fairfield Center. So what we would propose to do is just extend that existing streetscape further west. This proposed project was part of a plan. The plan was originally put together back in 1984 by the Economic Development Commission. At that time, the commission looked at a primary and secondary target area. The primary area was Fairfield Center as we know it today, the downtown core. That was the precursor and rationale behind the streetscape enhancement that took place. Obviously, there was a limitation in terms of funding, and we didn't get into the secondary target area. That is what we're proposing to do now. That plan was never formally adopted, and even if it were, given the fact that it was done back some 20, 30 years ago, the state would ask us to reaffirm that plan in order to apply for these funds. And so that is what I'm asking for your permission to do, and the application would be due by close of business on September 28th. We would probably not hear from the state until sometime over the winter, but they have indicated they intend to announce grant awards sometime prior to the start of the spring construction season. Again, it is a very competitive application, there are 134 municipalities that would be potentially eligible to apply. Number of them have plans that have been vetted or done by the Main Street Improvement Center and through the state, so they would probably have very strong applications, but we think it's worth a shot, and we'd like your permission to do so.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions or comments from the board? Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Barnhart. This is an exciting possibility for us. I think it would be wonderful. I had occasion to be at a meeting related to an intersection, the Thorpe Street, Mill Plain, Carter Henry, the five-way intersection there, and my question is, there's obviously, there are obviously going to be some pedestrian ramps and the sidewalk changes. Do you coordinate with engineering? I'm assuming you do, but just engineering, the police department, and all that. I saw Bill here earlier, I don't know that he is, but...
In fact...
And how do you do that in terms of going forward in the process?
Good question. The plan that I'm presenting to you today, I worked with the engineering department to develop this proposal. This is obviously just a concept plan, we would have to then do further survey and detailed engineering and design work to facilitate construction documents, where we so fortunate to be selected for funding, and we would anticipate that that work would be done in-house through our engineering department, over the winter, which is typically a good time for us to do that type of work. The other benefit of frankly going ahead with further developing this plan is, as you know, as we get further west, there are some key parcels that are being redeveloped or will be likely redeveloped in the near future, and we think that if we had a plan in place, then we could present to those property owners what we're looking at in terms of streetscape, and ask them to make those improvements as part of their overall redevelopment proposal.
I have two other questions for the moment. So I, the streetscape will be for both sides of the street, one side of the street, how, and how has that been in conversation with businesses? I guess I should, there are two questions there.
You really can't see it very well, I apologize. There are some infill that's going to be required, some areas have been already, already been improved to some degree. There are other portions of this area that would not lend themselves, we may not have sufficient right-of-way, or just simply it may be an impediment to the existing business operation. So we would work with, my role would be the business outreach component, talk to the individual businesses, and make sure they're familiar with what we're proposing to do, work through any concerns that they may have, and then develop those plans in concert with the engineering department for public bid.
And another, I think, just I see the improvement plan is, was adopted in '84 and updated in September. Were there any significant changes made?
Really, the only change that was made to it was an introduction in the background section to, so that the reader would understand the context in which it was being provided. We chose not to go into a more wholesale change. We think that that would be, I think it would be appropriate with this board's further endorsement, that that be a charge given to the Economic Development Commission to look at and do a comprehensive review and update of the plan. Frankly, the only reason we're here with this plan in its current state is that if we're going to meet the September 28 deadline, there really isn't sufficient time to do the type of outreach that we would typically want to do as part of a comprehensive plan update. And so we would like to do that in a more thoughtful manner over the next several months. If we are not successful in this grant application, there's a possibility there might be a second round of funding, in which case, if we go forward with updating our plan, we may be in a better position, having gone through that process, to resubmit in a second round, if there is a second round. So there is no promise or commitment there, that's why we wanted to submit for this go-around, because we know that there's at least $5 million available currently.
Comment, I, again, referencing the meeting that I attended, which was involved engineering, the state DOT, our police department, our fire department. There are a lot of parallel efforts that impact this corridor, and the Economic Development Commission clearly, there's now the pedestrian group, there's the police department, the fire department, and I hope that any efforts that occur related to this, that somehow we can coordinate and work together. Chief McNamara, not to, you know, put something out there, but he talked about in terms of traffic concerns, that a comprehensive study was needed of the corridor, looking at it from a wholesale picture, and I think some of what you're doing, being pedestrian-related, is interfaces with that, so I hope that we'll all continue to work together.
I totally share that.
And not duplicate efforts as well.
Right. I think that, and the Economic Development Commission Chairman is here, Peter Penzer, is the current Chair of the Commission. I think it's our intent to conduct outreach, not only other boards and commissions, but other key stakeholders, including the businesses that are involved, to ensure that everyone has a role and some input into this process. I think the, where I see the commission's role is, is really just shepherding that process, acting as a facilitator. And so that's what I would like to propose to you.
Mark, I know I've sat in some meetings with you, we've talked, we met with Planning and Zoning, or some representatives to kind of talk about what we might be doing from this part of the post road, but also further down into Southport, kind of as we expand the whole concept of Fairfield Center.
As the chairman just pointed out, we have currently a good relationship with the police department, who, and he's been gracious enough to come to our meetings and share concerns and thoughts with regard to Fairfield Center, in particular, and traffic concerns that the commission's had. We've also worked closely with Planning and Zoning in the past, and we would like to do so, as Mr. Tetrow mentioned, Planning and Zoning is looking very carefully at some of their regs as it relates to this particular area, and possibly extending the center business design district further west. They certainly want to, again, be very thoughtful and deliberative with regard to the redevelopment of some key parcels here, including the X site, Battery Site, that will be coming online in the next couple of years. So we would like to kind of put all, push all those pieces together and work together for a common goal here.
All right, thank you. Any further comments from board?
Just a couple things. Thank you, sir. Mark, thank you for this. On the plan itself, this is the 1984 plan with just minor modifications up front, as you mentioned, right?
Correct.
Is this the plan that you will submit on the 28th, or will this be updated prior to the 28th?
I don't believe, this is the plan that we will submit on the 28th, we simply don't have time to go through a more comprehensive update before the 28th.
Okay. Now, since this is 28 years old, is there anything that's in this plan that's either outdated, whether it's materials, technology, construction methodologies, et cetera, that could work against us in the approval process, that might need attention prior to that to make the case better?
Excellent question, and in anticipation of that, I should correct myself, because this represents an abridged version of the original 1984 plan. We did strip out a provision that was no longer applicable, it was anachronistic, so it was clearly not, it referred to businesses and entities that were no longer around. So we did make sure that it was at least up to date, there wasn't anything that was glaringly out of date at this time.
Are there any other, like, short strokes you can take between now and then to make this more presentable, or is it presentable itself, the way it is?
You know, I'm hoping it's presentable enough.
Okay.
Obviously, ideally, I would not be working with a plan that was from 1984.
Not presentable, right.
I would love to have the opportunity to do an update, but I feel that if we were to do that, we would be kind of working in a very small group, and we may not be representing some of the interest groups and others that have input into this process. And so I think it's probably, at this point in time, we'll have to address those issues in the application itself and the narrative portion, but I think for our purposes, it does connect to what we're proposing to do very clearly, and, which is why I thought it would be relevant.
So it gets you there?
It gets me there.
Okay. The other thing is, on the original qualification comment you made about being either under 30, which we don't qualify for, or the STEEP.
Right.
Can you refresh my memory on what the, how we qualify it as a STEEP or what the cri, just the basics? I don't know why we are STEEP eligible.
I'm not really sure.
Okay.
So I probably can look that up for you and get back to you, but I wouldn't venture a guess at this point.
I think we've had explanations in the past, I just...
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head, but we are. I checked that before, I came to you, we are eligible under STEEP, so...
Does the fact that we're STEEP eligible and not under 30 or both, does that disadvantage us at all, or is either or equal in presentable?
I think either or is equal in presentable. I think what's, what will be the deciding factor will be the number of applications received, the quality of these applications. As I said, you know, if you look at the legislation, and how it came to be, and how this program came to be, it's pretty clear to me that there were some communities that may have had a head start. They may have had plans already approved and ready to go. Certainly, you know, it's unrealistic, and I even posed this question, though PM, that communities could start from July and have a comprehensive downtown improvement plan by September in time to apply for a grant. So the question did come up, the question also came up whether communities could submit, I didn't ask this question, other communities did, communities could submit a plan that is 20 years old, and the response was, yes, you could, so long as it's still relevant today and it's been reaffirmed by the governing board, which is why I'm here today.
Well, good. Well, thank you very much for the update, and thanks for all the efforts you guys have made on this project. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And also, Mark, your comments, and since Mr. Penzer's here, thank you to the Economic Development Commission for taking on the task of doing a more comprehensive update on this to, because this is a very exciting part of our town, and I know discussions that Mark and I were in, we talked about as more and more development happens in this corridor, we want to make sure that we have a standard for what folks are looking for. So we give the developers a chance to build to something that fits and is part of the same theme, and really helps tie the rest of Fairfield to our very exciting downtown. Any further comments from board?
No, just thanks to Mr. Penzer as well.
Any comments from the public? All right, then back to the board. Ready to vote?
We are.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you to both of you. Mark, I think you're up next, also with item 15, to hear an update on Restaurant Week, which is scheduled for October 14 through 20.
Okay.
That's October 14 through 20, 14 through 20.
Great. Well, I'm delighted to announce our inaugural Fairfield Restaurant Week, which is, Mr. Tetrow mentioned, is October 14 through the 20th, 2012. We've had an outstanding response today from restaurants here in town, all throughout town, in all neighborhoods, and what you see here is a partial list of the restaurants that will be participating. As of about 4 o'clock today, before I headed over here, we had given restaurants until close of business today to indicate whether or not they would like to participate and provide some information about their participation in the program. We had 30-plus restaurants involved, over 30 restaurants.
Wow, that's huge.
And from Southport to Grassmere, to Fairfield Center, to Black Rock Turnpike, Pumice Hill, to Greenfield Hill. So we've had a very outstanding response. You'll see a lot of the higher-end, named, easily recognizable restaurants that are here. Again, this is a partial list, we'll be providing... Again, this is a partial list, we'll be providing a much fuller list as of next week. We do have a website that is currently active, it's a work in progress, I should say. But, you know, part of it is that we're obviously waiting until we had a full list of the restaurants that will be participating. We'll also be on social media, we have a Facebook page, as well as we'll be on Twitter as well, so you can follow us on Twitter and Facebook, and get regular updates. A couple of things that are different about this program, as compared to how maybe some other communities do Restaurant Week, although a lot of places do Restaurant Week these days. One of the things we've done consciously from the beginning is, we've reached out to a number of other organizations in town, not only to help leverage the town's marketing power, but also to engage them in an effort to provide activities and events and happenings in town that would naturally pair with going out to eat, with the idea of creating a night out. So, we've worked with both universities, we've worked with the Fairfield Public Library, we've worked with the Fairfield Museum and History Center, the Theater Company, and others, to provide activities and events that will be happening during that week. You can get information regarding those events on our website, and that, those events will be updated regularly as we get closer to the event itself. The other thing that we're doing in order to, again, create more enthusiasm and interest within the community and engage some of the other businesses in this effort, we've created a little Fairfield Passport. So, what you will do is, if you go to a participating restaurant, you'll get this with your check. You can pick these up in advance of the Restaurant Week at other locations here in town yet to be announced, but they'll likely be at the library and other places. I should note that the Bank of Fairfield has generously underwritten a portion of the cost of printing this, so they're one of our lead sponsors, and this will, of course, be available in their bank branch locations here in Fairfield. But the general idea is, you would take your passport, you would go to one of these restaurants, you'd get it with your check, and your passport would be stamped from the restaurant. It bears the logos of each of the restaurants that will be participating. If you go to more than one restaurant during the course of the week, you can get entered into a raffle. We'll have a raffle drawing after the week, perhaps we'll ask the Board to be the raffle drawing folks. We'll do the raffle drawing as part of a board meeting, that would be great. I guess that would disqualify you from winning, but that's the breaks. Our top prize is a night stay at the Southport Delamar, and we have other great prizes donated by Fairfield Businesses. All those businesses will be listed as sponsors, they'll be listed as sponsors on our website. We'll have some, we'll obviously provide indication of sponsors on our posters and our other collateral material, and so, we would ask folks to frequent those businesses and thank them for their sponsorship in this program. So, that, in a nutshell, is the program we've been working diligently to, we get as many restaurants as we could, engaged and excited about this. It's our first year, and we're really looking forward to it. So, we'll start ramping up our publicity, and I see members of the press and media here today. So, they'll probably beat me to the punch, but I think we wanted to finalize a more formal press release as of next week, once we've given everyone kind of the opportunity to get their checks and their applications into us. There is a cost to the restaurant of $200, which goes toward the marketing and promotion end of the, end of the business. And again, we're very excited, we've got a great response, and there's a lot of great restaurants to suit every cuisine and palate price range. So, join us for Fairfield Restaurant Week. You'll probably be seeing the First Selectmen on YouTube, we've got a video production company shooting some videos as part of the promotion. Each restaurant that participates, we've agreed to provide a little 36 and promo, 30-second promo shot that will be on their website through Restaurant Week. So, you'll note here, they've got a little QR code, so you'll be able to scan from your smartphone device, and you'll go directly to our website where you'll get information on the program. So, we're very excited and hope everyone will join us, and bon appétit.
And if I might, I want to thank Mark Barnhart for his work on this. We talked about this late last year, I announced it as part of the State of the Town address last January. It's great to see this finally come to fruition. Mark, you've done a great deal of work on this in the midst of your other responsibilities, and pulling this off for the first time. Doing something the first time is never easy. Jen Carpenter's been helping him out.
Absolutely.
In terms of coordinating this, putting it together. 29 restaurants participating the first time through on this is just phenomenal. We're looking at it, literally, in this case, we talked about starting small, though it seems bigger than we talked. We talked about building on this each year. There are a number of communities around that have done Restaurant Week. With Fairfield's downtown being as exciting as it is, being a really destination location, and having the restaurants, we really want to show Fairfield off. We have the product, we have the people coming, we want to keep that going, we want to introduce Fairfield to more people. This gives us an excuse, a chance to publicize a lot of the things that are great about Fairfield, our restaurants, our shops, our downtown, and more. So, I'm very excited about this, and very excited about this, again, in terms of previews of coming attractions, building up, building up to a townwide birthday party for our 375th birthday in 2014. So, Mark, thank you for all the hard work, thank you for the update. Any questions from the Board?
Just a comment, I think it's great, I mean, I can hear the enthusiasm, and I'm excited to go out to eat that week. The Community Conversation Group had had an event with, and it was a conversation on diversity in our community, and people went out to various restaurants. And I think the other aspect of this, besides being great for business and great for the community to get out, it's showcasing the diversity in our town, and food is a great way to do that, and we really do have a wonderful diversity here in Fairfield, and so, I'm grateful for that as well.
Mr. Kylie.
Thank you. Just a quick question, Mark. I know it's early, and I know it's the first year, are there any special events planned along with the Restaurant Week? Like, either at the restaurants, or around the restaurants, or?
Restaurants have all been asked to offer a prefix menu or special discount as part of Restaurant Week. Some may, we haven't gotten too far in terms of any other entertainment at the restaurant venue themselves, but we are working with our partners to provide those activities that you would naturally pair, or maybe not so naturally pair with going out to eat. So, we've got some things happening at the Sportsplex, for example, where people might want to be more physically active, and then take a shower, and then go out to eat someplace. So, we've got some things going on there as well. But, yeah, it's, it's, it's still, we're still working on a couple of the details.
And if anyone has any thoughts?
Anyone has any thoughts, we're open to suggestions.
Am I open?
Absolutely.
I have one.
Sure?
Have you thought about putting any people in, like, guest spots in any of the restaurants, like a guest bartender, a guest waiter?
That's a good idea.
Maybe Mr. Tetra could be a guest waiter at one of the restaurants.
Or at least just watching, right? Why, why Mr. Tetra? I thought Mr. Kylie would do it.
We could all do it. No, I'm just thinking out loud. Are there any, you know, wild and crazy thoughts we could come up with, to whether it's somebody famous that becomes the waiter at one of the restaurants, or?
That's not a bad idea, I think that's.
I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud.
No, I mean, you know, this is how, this is how the process began. We started talking to various groups, and, you know, getting inputs and feedback and suggestions. Obviously, we're familiar with what other communities have done in the way of Restaurant Week. But, you know, it's always interesting to try and do something fresh and different. So, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say no to it. It might be a little bit difficult to pull off in the four or five weeks we've got left to go, but, you know, I have no problem with talking to a couple of the restaurants and saying if there's, if they have any interest in doing it. So, it, you know, those are, those are all great ideas, and if we are not able to do a this-go-round, there's always next year. Because we're, you know, based on the response we've had today, and assuming it goes as well as we think it will, this is something we're likely to do on an annual basis.
Mark, do you have the passport?
I do. This is just a rough, a rough draft, but, I'm still working on it, so, there's a little section for you to say, "Welcome."
It's me.
And you'll see that, you know, again, we have, we're trying to use, you know, this technology to make sure that people can scan that and get information if they need to. Hopefully, the website now is, is, you're able to review it on a mobile device better. So, we've taken some thought to try to, try to get through the technology issues.
I think we talked earlier in the meeting about the volunteer spirit in Fairfield, and I think this gives us the same concept, same theme, but from another perspective. Here are businesses in town literally volunteering to step up and be part of this for the first time. We haven't done this before, there's no guarantee of quite how this is going to turn out, though I've got great faith in Mark. And, and, so, I look at the brochure concept, I want to thank the Bank of Fairfield for stepping up to be a sponsor, but I also want to thank all the participating restaurants for stepping up, and, you know, they've invested their time and money in Fairfield. I think this is another step in that path that helps the entire community out, and gives us something else we can share in as a community, we can all come together. And I think you see that the excitement and buzz that gets created, be it the Memorial Day Parade, be it the 4th of July fireworks, this becomes another event that gets our community out and visiting each other, and I guess being the one single guy on the Board. I eat out a lot, so I'm looking forward to this. The, any, any other comments from the Board?
No.
With that, Mark, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Peter, thank you for your help, and again, thank you to all the sponsors.
I volunteer. I volunteer.
Yeah, thanks. I'm out every night, anyway. The, all right, next up, the item 16, the Fair TV Operational Committee Charge, to hear, consider, and act upon revisions of the Fair TV Operational Committee Charge, approved by the Board of Selectmen on October 11th, 2006. With the Board's permission and for your consideration, we haven't had a chance to talk about this, this has come up several times, we've kind of wrestled with perhaps the best way to address this and update the charge, and, as has been suggested by Mr. Cannelly in our last meeting, how to more formalize the Fair TV presence in our town and for our town on a longer-term basis. I guess I did, my thought or proposal to the Board is literally to take no action on this, but come back at our next Board of Selectmen meeting with some reappointments to our Fair TV Commission, and kind of charge them with coming back to us with some updates on this, in terms of what they might perceive, so we can get some folks that are very knowledgeable in process, very involved. I know we've wrestled with the time commitment to get up to speed in this. So, the thought would be, we take no action, and that doesn't reflect at all on Fair TV, but it allows the, charge to stay in place, it allows us to focus in the next two weeks on finding some candidates to be on the Board, be they folks that have served on it, or perhaps some new blood, there's a mix. But then, charge them with coming back to us with something that would be relevant and make sense to help us going forward with this. So, I guess, for our discussion, I would ask you to consider that.
I think that makes a lot of sense. My one question is, have you received some interest from people to be part of it, or is that something you're going to start more now, looking forward?
We had sent out a press release in late spring, I'm going to say, we've got several folks there. You know, one that comes to mind is a representative from the League of Women Voters who wanted to be involved in this. We also have the folks that have served on this committee in the past.
Right.
That may consider participating again.
Okay, so there is some activity.
So, there is some on that respect. I think we could still use a few more names or a few more candidates to consider, so if you have any thoughts.
Great.
That would be, that would be helpful.
Fantastic.
But, that lets us literally move forward, I think it gets off, gets it off our plate, and gets it in the hands of people that know it the best, and want to be involved and have the time to work out some of the details and kinks, so we can move forward from here.
Fair enough.
Any thoughts?
No, I think that it's, as I mentioned in a conversation at one point, the Borough Gardens Committee is an example of a group that had done the work on their charge, and then brought that back to this body. I think we changed one word in that document, said thank you to them for doing the actual work, and, and approved that, so I think it makes sense. And I think there are some potential folks out there, and I think this is an important service to the town, and I think we need folks who are willing to be kind of good arbiters and fair. It is Fair TV, so I think we're looking for people who are going to be fair and judicious in the decision process going forward, so I think this is a good plan, and I'm in favor of that action, actually, no action.
All right, then, if we take no action on that.
Uh huh.
We would then move on to the next item.
Which?
Tax collector refunds, may I have a motion to accept the tax collector refunds?
So?
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's done. To hear, consider, and act upon any communications, don't have any there, to hear, consider, and act upon any other business. Mr. Kylie, I think you requested a moment to make a comment.
Yes, I did. Hold on one second here. I wanted to, we had a, we had a joint Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen meeting last night. It wasn't really an official joint meeting, but it was a meeting where all 10 of us did attend, and the main topic of conversation was the current status, the process, and the situation with the transition of the current CFO into retirement or resignation. So, I'm not looking to rehash that, I think we properly, last night, joined together as a 10-person team, much like we do at the budget time. It was collegial, there were some tense moments, but there were some good questions, and, you know, there were some, there was some good information and some good answers that were shared. Some I agree with, many I did not. I think the bigger point is that we got the issues out there, and we talked about it, and we were able to at least get our differences, you know, discussed on the public record. So, I don't think there's a need for us to have a Q and A session here on that topic, because the questions I had, I either asked myself last night, or they were asked by other members of the Board of Finance, or the Board of Selectmen, and I do thank them for doing that. And I thank Mr. Tetra for being there and bringing counsel, and, you know, patiently answering all the questions that were asked of him, and I know many of them were, you know, difficult questions to answer, so I do want to thank you for that, sir. The process, you know, I have a couple of issues with the process. My main concern with the process, and I can boil it down to just a couple of points, was the communication. I think the communication was, it was inconsistent, it was scattered, and I don't know whether it was, from my perspective, at times, accurate of what was either happening or had happened. So, I did take exception to a lot of the communication and the timing of it, and there certainly is room for improvement on that area. The other issue to me was the contract. We did hear from legal counsel last night that, that the agreement did not or does not need to come before this Board, and I'm not a lawyer, and I'm not looking to debate that topic any more than we debated it last night. But I do think, my understanding of the Charter, and my understanding of the history of this town, clearly indicates to me that that is an agreement that should have come before this Board. Not because I wanted to come before this Board, or I had any, you know, any horse, I don't have any horse in the race as far as the nuts and bolts of the agreement. My issue is with the process. And I do think that the Board of Selectmen, whether it was publicly or privately, or both, should have reviewed, and opined, and voted on that contract. And I still feel that way. I strongly feel that, you know, you can use the word circumvent, you can use the word omitted, whatever word you want to use, I do think that the Board of Selectmen was pushed out of the process, and it's a process they had a right to be part of, and should have been part of. So, I do, I take exception to that, and we're just going to have to agree to disagree on that. I mean, that's what, that's how I think, and that's how I feel. The other point that I wanted to just quickly talk about was the operations of the Finance Department. It's ever-changing, it's a very busy department, and I am, and I do remain concerned about how that department is going to be able to run efficiently on a day-to-day basis, how the work will get done, how the reporting will get done, how the team will be able to work and interact together, and how the output, the financial results are going to be forthcoming from the Finance Department. There's a lot of work that goes through there, everything from accounts payable, to payroll, to investments, to cash management, treasury functions go through there. There's just a lot of stuff going on, and I'm just not convinced that the current makeup of a couple of days here, and a transition of a person from across the hall to that office, is going to be able to efficiently continue the operations that the town of Fairfield is accustomed to getting from that department. Fairfield is accustomed to getting from that department. The other issue that struck home to me greatly last night, and I attribute the comment to Chairman Flynn, who did a much better job of conveying it than I can, was the management of the whole process. It goes back to communication, but even beyond the communication, it goes back to how an employee, specifically a long-term trusted and endeared employee, is treated. And beyond that personal level, what the effect that is on the other town hall employees. You know, when you let a person go or when a person leaves, there's more than that person that leaves. Their staff loses part of them. The history of that person goes with that person. And the way the situation is handled, whether it's handled perfectly or imperfectly, does have a lasting impact on both the morale and the commitment and the enthusiasm of the employees who are left behind. And with what information I have, I think that we have a lot of work to do in that area to improve the morale and the fallout from this matter amongst the town hall employees. And I've heard a lot from them, and very little of it has been positive, if any. So I am very concerned about them, their productivity, their well-being, and the general morale of town hall. I mean, those are my general comments. The last comment I would like to make is, I'm not convinced, even with the opinions of the attorneys, and even knowing that there have been adjustments to pensions made as part of retirement packages or early retirement packages in the past, that you can argue are similar to this, but I would argue are dissimilar because they incorporated groups of people that were applying for or accepting packages or programs for their retirement. I'm not convinced that what was done to modify the last day's salary for calculation of pension is within anyone's power, let alone the first selectmen's. And I'm not convinced that it's not a precedent-setting thing, that is something we should not be doing for any reason at any time, and that's something else I do take exception to. Legal counsel disagreed. They disagreed on two or three of my points. They have their right to their opinion, and we certainly have ours, but I don't think, you know, modifying salaries to adjust pension benefits that are going to have financial impacts on the town both today and into the future for many years is the right thing to do or is a precedent or a process that we should be setting or doing. That's really it. I mean, I just wanted to follow up with a few comments. And again, thank everyone for being there last night, and I know it was, look, it was a long, late, difficult evening, and there were a lot of interesting and difficult questions that were asked, but I think they had to be asked, and I think the Board of Finance did a wonderful job of handling the situation and keeping the decorum, you know, in a manner that you would expect of the Board of Finance. So that's it. I think my last comment would be, you know, I remain very disappointed in both what happened, the process, and then how it was handled. And I really strongly still feel that the Board of Selectmen should review that contract, should see it, and should vote on it. And I still feel that way. I'm not convinced that we should not do that, and I still feel strongly that we should, even today.
Thank you. Mr. Kylie, thank you for your feedback. Kristin, did you have any comments?
Yes, please. I just want to thank you also for the conversation and the opportunity to address this here at our Board of Selectmen meeting. I was grateful to be welcomed to the table, of course, as an executive member, and had an opportunity to ask questions, like Mr. Kylie. And I don't wish to rehash, but just to share some of my views about the situation and Paul Hiller's move out of the CFO position. One of the things that I noticed that, as I sat at the Board of Finance meeting last night, it seemed clear to me that the Board of Selectmen would have been the appropriate first venue for some of the issues that were being discussed. And I understand that the timing and order of the presentation was limited due to the schedule of the attorney who couldn't be present here today, and that there's a cost issue. Counsel appearing at two meetings is an added cost to the town. That said, I believe an initial conversation at the Board of Selectmen level, specifically on the legal matters, would have made sense and been helpful to the process going forward. And in terms of looking forward, hope that we can do that if we come upon something such as this in the future. I also just want to be clear, because I don't think I was clear enough last night, that I was not a party to events leading up to Mr. Hiller's resignation or to the negotiation of the settlement agreement. Clearly, the legal counsel has advised the First Selectman, Mr. Tetra, he has a right to set the terms and conditions of employment and had a right to make a change in this position without consulting with the Board of Selectmen, and I agree that our First Selectman has this right. In terms of the settlement agreement itself and the discussion as to whether or not it's a contract and should have been brought before this board, I think that it goes back to Mr. Kylie's comments on communication, and perhaps having had that discussion last night, I think there are some valid questions and arguments on both sides of that. And again, in terms of going forward, that the way that we as a board communicate or the First Selectmen communicates that would help to address that process. I do respect the First Selectmen's role and authority. I also believe, though, on the town level, that more voices and perspectives can be helpful in processes such as these. We have a highly skilled and dedicated community of employees and leaders who deserve respect and consideration, and I will continue to work both with Mr. Tetra and Mr. Kylie to ensure that that is what they receive. I think Mr. Kylie touched on the town employees, and I know that the First Selectmen certainly will work with all of us and as a day-to-day manager of the town to address the concerns that are out there. At this point, I think that we've made an agreement that I believe we now need to honor. Though I'm not a lawyer, as you said, Mr. Kylie, none of us are here. I don't think that we can reverse any part of this agreement without adverse consequences to the parties involved. And I think that the question as to whether, or the discussion as to whether or not the Board of Selectmen should be involved is, at this point, in this particular situation, something that's more of a philosophical conversation moving forward, and as was suggested last night, perhaps begs clarification in future charter revision. I also want to thank Paul Hiller, which I did not do last night and was remiss, for his service to Fairfield over the course of many years, and wish him good luck and God's peace as he enters the new phase of his life's journey.
All right, thank you.
May I just respond to a couple of things, please?
If they're brief and very to the point, Mr. Kylie, this is not an item for discussion. I did honor your request for comments that touch both on items and further than that, so.
Fair enough.
With your understanding.
I do understand that. I would like to respond that I don't see this as philosophical, and I don't see this as a done deal, and I don't see this as something that we should not and cannot do anything about because you're setting a precedent. You're allowing something to happen, and you're looking back and saying, well, jeez, I wish that didn't happen, but I guess it did, so there's nothing we can do about it, so let's go home. I don't buy that. I don't buy that for five seconds. I think it's wrong. And I think the Board of Selectmen should look at this contract, and I move that the Board of Selectmen review this contract. That is a motion.
Mr. Kylie, it's a motion that's out of order at this time? And you did ask for time to make a comment under this case?
I actually, that's fine, but I still believe that the Board of Selectmen should review this contract, and I am making a motion for the Board of Selectmen to review this contract.
Mr. Kylie, that motion is...
You can deny it, or you can let it sit on the table, that's up to you, but I am making a motion for the Board of Selectmen to review the Paul Hiller separation agreement in its official capacity as voting Board of Selectmen members.
Thank you, Mr. Kylie. You had asked for time to comment, but that is something that's not appropriate to come before the board at this time.
I disagree with you. I'm allowed to make a motion.
Mr. Kylie, please.
I'm allowed to make a motion.
Mr. Kylie.
I made a motion. It's on the floor.
Mr. Kylie, please. I ruled it out of order.
You ruled it out of order.
Thank you.
Okay.
Simply put, this is a very certainly difficult time, and any time you look at making a personnel change in this magnitude, it certainly is a cause for reflection and much consideration. But to comment specifically, the CFO is appointed by the First Selectmen and is responsible for the First Selectmen. I tried to find a balance in making this change, in having a smooth transition, and respecting Mr. Hiller's need to explore other options. I was able to accomplish this while staying within the budget guidelines and minimizing our legal exposure, and importantly, used outside legal counsel to make sure that what we did was proper and correct at every step of the way. The agreement is, in fact, a document that memorializes or puts in the writing what the chief fiscal officer's salary compensation was and defines the benefit program, and we use the existing benefit program as we work through that. Now, it was pointed out that, as with many of our retirees or other people leaving, that some of those costs are not included in the lineup on the budget but are typically taken out of the contingency, and as was correctly pointed out, that is perhaps a bigger challenge this year than in other years. In terms of operations of the Finance Department, I'll be working very closely with Mr. Hiller and Mr. Mayor to make sure there is both no drop-off in service, but that that transition goes as smoothly as possible. I also think it's correctly pointed out that anything, any change like this is certainly to some degree traumatic to the people involved, and we do have work to do to make sure that this transition goes as smoothly as possible, not only for the town and the operations, but for the employees involved in this, and we'll be making every effort to do that. So with that as an end to this section, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A second? All second? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Proposed.
All right. So noted. Thank you all.